At 5:00. I'd like to call the Planning Board meeting of May 16, 2024 to order. Persons who wish to do so are invited to attend in person or view the meeting at the link on the city website, or you can join us by phone, 309-205-3325. Media ID number is 833-54571564. For instructions and guidance on how to join the meeting remotely, please note that in-person meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technology or technological problems interrupt the remote connection. So we have called the meeting to order. I'm glad everybody gets to use and see all of our art that we just put up for you guys tonight. We're going to introduce Planning Board members. To my far right, Hank McCarle. Sean is on the West Coast, but we'll be dialing in remotely. We've got Beverly Bookin, Doug Cook, Jane Ramsen. I'm Rick Noonan, the chair. And next to me is Greg Catamatory, our Planning Director, and of course, David Rosen. So first under the agenda this evening is A&R's Site Planner Review and Preliminary Subdivision Plans. First, under this subheading is a Site Plan Review application submitted by Boport LLC for a 50-space parking lot to be located at 1 Gloucester Crossing Road, Assessor's Map 262, Lot 13. The applicant has requested this to be continued to our August 15, 2024 meeting. So I'll accept the motion.
I move that we continue the Site Plan Review for 1 Gloucester Crossing Road to our meeting on August 15, 2024.
I second.
So we had a motion by Jane Ramsen, seconded by Beverly Bookin. All in favor?
I just will make a note, we do have one remote participant, so we will have to make motions by roll call.
Okay, and Sean has joined us?
Sean has joined us.
Okay, so roll call vote, please.
Member Noonan?
Yes.
Member McCarle?
Yes.
Member Bookin?
Yes.
Member Cook?
Yes.
Member Ramsen?
Yes.
Member Rosen?
Yes.
And member Henry?
Yes.
Sean, oh, there you are. Little box at the bottom. So next, under the agenda, Approval Not Required Plan submitted to rebuild Gloucester LLC to buy property at 10 Orchard Road, 22 Grapevine Road, and 24 Grapevine Road. Assessor's map, 83 lots, 16, 121, and 120. You have representation. I've been told the mic works, attorney Favazza.
I think it does. Good evening. For the record, Joel Favazza, Seaside Legal Solutions, 123 Main Street, here on behalf of the applicant. As the chair pointed out, we are here seeking an endorsement on Approval Not Required Plan, just jogging two pieces of a lot line out on Orchard Road and Grapevine Road. As you can see from the plan submitted, the lot known as 5A is going to get a little narrower in the rear, which is the grapevine side, and a little wider on the orchard side, which I'm calling the front for now, which is where the tennis court is located. Otherwise, the number of lots isn't changing, the lots all remain conforming, and this lot has no structures built upon it currently, and it will remain a vacant lot, subject to future development. So with that, I do not believe approval is required. I believe an endorsement for A&R is appropriate, and I would love to get one. Thanks so much.
Any color, Greg, on this?
No, fairly straightforward. You can see the two adjustments. All the lots still have the minimum frontage requirement, as well as lot area for the R20 District.
Questions from board members? Very none.
I move that we approve the Approval Not Required Plan for 22 Grapevine Road and 24 Grapevine Road.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Jane Ramsen, seconded by Hank McCarle. Roll call vote, please.
Member Noonan?
Yes.
Member McCarle?
Yes.
Member Bookin?
Yes.
Member Cook?
Yes.
Member Ramsen?
Yes.
Member Rosen?
Yes.
And member Henry?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Okay, next, under the agenda this evening is Major Project Review. In accordance with GZO 5.7.4, the Gloucester Planning Board will review the proposed major project submitted by 20 Main LLC for a 24 residential unit mixed-use project to be located at 20 Main Street, Assessor's Map 7, and Lot 94. Attorney Ellison is here representing the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Deborah Ellison, Ellison Law Office, 63 Middle Street, Gloucester. If I might share my screen? Tonight, there are three items I'd like to address. We would like to correct the record. Certain letters that have been presented to you do have inaccurate information. We also will be presenting a traffic study findings. We have sent the traffic study report out today, so I don't expect that you've had an opportunity to look at it, but I wanted to at least give you a preliminary review. And we also have a shadow study that we would like to go through. So with regard to the record, there have been many inaccurate and false statements that have been placed in the record by the materials that people have filed who are opposed to the project, and I just want to take this opportunity to correct the record. With regard to the existing retaining wall, it is not on the Middle Street property, and it is not owned by the Middle Street property. So this is the site plan that shows you. You can see my cursor. This is where the retaining wall is. This is the boundary of my client's property, and the retaining wall is entirely on his property. With regard to the retaining wall, again, it does not touch the proposed building. It is somewhat difficult on the site plan to see where the building is, so I have outlined it in red to show you. This is the nearest point of the property where it jogs in, and the building also jogs in. There is a retaining wall for the parking lot that is in this corner, but the building itself does not touch the retaining wall and is at closest 5 and 1/2 feet from the retaining wall. There will be no significant construction that will take place directly adjacent to the existing retaining wall, and all construction, of course, will be done in accordance with industry standards and done in consultation with the appropriate professionals. I'd also like to address issues that have been raised with regard to notice. There have been repeated claims that, by the owners of 33 Middle Street, that proper notice has not been given to the legal abutters, and that is not a true statement. Proper statutory notice was given to both ZBA and the HDC Historic District Commission hearings. Lists of abutters were obtained from the city, and notices were sent out in accordance with those lists. Notices do not have to be sent by certified mail. The notices were also posted in the Gloucester Daily Times, at City Hall, on the city website. All applications and drawings were available on the city website and at city offices throughout the process. The only party that alleges they did not give notice is 33 Middle Street. They purchased the property in December 21, 2022, and that was after the notice for the ZBA hearing went out. With regard to the HDC abutter list, they were not yet listed as the owner on that list. The notice was mailed to 33 Middle Street, but in the name of a prior owner. That notice was proper under the statute. They have stated that they had actual notice in July 2023, and that gave them ample time to appeal the HDC decision if they wanted to, and to also contest ZBA notice and HDC notice, but they've chosen not to do that. The applicant has reached out to them personally and through their lawyers, offering to hear their concerns, but they have refused to do that. I would just like to say that offer remains open. With regard to building materials, the proposed building materials are natural materials. They're not stamped stucco, as have been stated in some of the letters. The headers in the storefront are granite veneer. It's real granite, but it's not a full block of granite. Same thing with the brick veneer. Again, it's real brick. It's not stamped stucco. It's important to know also that the zoning act does not allow the regulation or restriction of the use of materials or methods of construction or structures that are regulated by the State Building Code. That's within the applicant's discretion, and it's not the purview of the city or the town. With regard to the Historic District Commission, there were opposition letters that argue that the building is bulky, massive, and doesn't fit in the district. These concerns were raised at the HDC meeting, but the HDC voted to approve the design four in favor, one abstention. The HDC is charged with reviewing purely aesthetic considerations. Nothing in the zoning ordinance sections governing the requested permits from the city council suggests that purely aesthetic concerns or concerns about the architecture or style are appropriate for the city council or the planning board. That's especially so when you do have a matter that is within the Historic District Commission. With regard to the petition that was circulated in August of 2023, the petition opposed any residential development at this site whatsoever. That's unrealistic. It's not in keeping with the spirit of property ownership in this country, and it's contrary to the goal of the city to increase its housing stock to accommodate the needs of its residents. The petition claims that the Middle Street residents were not provided with architectural drawings nor were they asked to provide comments, and that's completely false. Numerous public hearings were held before the ZBA and the HDC for almost a year. Public comment was taken at those hearings, and the plans, as I said, were publicly available. Petition also alleges that a portion of the project encroaches on 33 Middle Street. Again, that's not true. Since the last meeting, there was a letter that was submitted from Ms. Steiner. That letter makes some serious allegations against my client, stating expressly that the letters of support of this project were coerced. I would suggest to you that that's not appropriate for that statement to be in the record, since there is absolutely no substantiation of that, and I'd ask that it be stricken from the record. So I ask, in summary, that you look critically at the information that is being submitted, because it is not always true and accurate. I would like to also talk about the findings of the traffic study. We commissioned a traffic study ourselves because there had been numerous statements made about how this was going to negatively impact the traffic. It was conducted by Viness, and they are a well-renowned traffic organization, and we have provided you with the complete report, and we certainly would be happy to have them come and answer any questions if you have any detailed questions or technical questions. But for the purposes of tonight, I just wanted to walk you through the highlights. They evaluated specific areas as they relate to this project. They looked at the access requirements. They looked at the potential off-site improvements. They looked at safety considerations, and they identified and analyzed existing traffic conditions and future traffic conditions, looking both at with and without the project. And they looked along Main Street and other major intersections through which the project would travel. They found in their analysis that there would be 170 additional average weekday trips, and that's back and forth, two ways. 12 vehicle trips weekday mornings during peak hours, 26 vehicle trips weekday evening peak hours. They found that the project will not result in a significant impact on the motorist's delays or vehicle queuing, and there'll be no change in the level of service. The lines of sight to and from the project site driveway also exceed minimum distances for the intersection. Their conclusion is that the project can be accommodated within the confines of the existing transportation infrastructure in a safe and efficient manner. We also have conducted a shadow study, and I'm going to ask that the architect be brought in. I know he was having a little trouble finding the link, so hopefully he is on the call at this point, and I'll stop sharing my screen.
Just need you to state your full name and affiliation for the record before you start. So you're still muted, and your video is turned off. I can hear you.
Okay. Dan Delulon, 16 Crystal Street, Melrose, Mass., the architect of record for 20 Main Street LLC.
Thank you. The floor is yours. Attorney Ellison, do you want to? There you go.
Yeah, I think I'd like to share my screen.
Head?
Okay. So what we've got is a shadow study, month by month. 12 different slides on the first of each month, January through December, at 2:00 in the afternoon on each day. So the top of the sheet here is north, so from the building faces a little bit to the So we can see that on January 1 of any year, the shadows are at about the longest at 2:00 in the afternoon. What I'll do is I'll scroll through month by month. So we see that in February, they're just a little bit shorter. And I'm going to go back to the first one. So these are the longest shadows, and we can see from the shadow study that the shadows from 20 Main Street just barely encroach on the two houses directly behind. I believe it's 33 and 35 Middle Street. And they, excuse me?
And can you just put your cursor over the subject property for me?
Yeah. This building in the center is the subject property.
Okay, thank you for the orientation.
This is 33 Middle Street, I believe, and this is 35 Middle Street, if I'm correct. So you can see the shadow line just barely kind of skims those two properties, and it helps that those two properties are significantly higher than the building at 33 Middle Street. In the next scene, which is February 1, again, at 2:00 in the afternoon, the shadows are considerably shorter and don't encroach on either of those two properties and back. They still encroach on the restaurant in the corner, but they don't really affect any other building. March, not really much difference in the shadow. March, they're a little bit shorter, but still not encroaching. When we get into the, starting into the spring and summer in April, the shadows are considerably shorter at 2:00 in the afternoon because there's sunsire in the sky. May, not a whole lot of difference in May. You start to see in the middle of the summer, when you get into June, the 2:00 PM shadows are significantly shorter. Again, this is July, August, no shadowing on any really of the adjacent properties except the restaurant in the corner and the two essentially parking lots on that side. This is August. They're starting to get a little bit longer, you'll see at 2:00 in the afternoon. In September, they're starting to get a little bit longer at 2:00 in the afternoon. Again, the first of every month. 1st of November, at 2:00 in the afternoon, we get a little bit of encroachment on 33 Middle Street, just a tiny bit of encroachment on the restaurant on that corner. And then December 1, 2:00 in the afternoon, we start to get some longer shadows that go up that retaining wall and kind of touch those two houses on the top. And then again, back to January 1. So you can see that this is about the limit of the shadows when the sun is the lowest in the winter. Any questions I can answer?
Questions from the Planning Board members? Thank you for that presentation. It helps, and...
Thank you.
Those are the presentations that we have for this evening, and I'd just like to talk about the next steps. There have been two comments, I believe, from staff that have been submitted, and we are working on some of the questions that were raised by the city engineer. We have commissioned a drainage stormwater study, as well as an analysis of the inflow and outflow utility capacity. We are hoping to have those by your June 20 meeting, so we're asking that we be continued until that date to be able to provide you with that information. But we're happy to answer any questions you might have, and if, in the interim, you would like to have the traffic study, have any questions about that, we can make sure that someone from Vanessa's available also.
Questions by your board members? Beverly?
Good evening. I want to talk about the traffic study for a minute. Would you review the numbers, the daily numbers, total trips, and then in the morning and afternoon, peak hour?
170 vehicle trips on an average weekday, and that is back and forth, so to and from the site. 12 vehicle trips weekday mornings during peak hours, and 26 vehicle trips in the evening during peak hours. And they had determined that they didn't expect that that would exacerbate any queuing, and I believe that they thought it would be less of a delay than two seconds. I think that was my memory of the report.
For the benefit of the audience and my fellow members, I have reviewed hundreds of transportation studies in my career, and they're pretty much all the same, no matter how complex the project is, because there's a certain routine, a certain formula that transportation engineers use, that I call it the technical cookbook that's presented by the Institute of Transportation Engineers, so that virtually if another transportation engineer had done the study instead, I believe that the findings would be the same, literally the same. And it's helped here in Massachusetts, because I think the state sets standards for what must be contained in a transportation study. So for the benefit of everybody, how many units do we have in this project?
24.
So 170 trips is a 24-hour day, so that it's spread over 24 hours. I don't know what the peak morning is. Usually it's 8 to 9. Yeah, 8 to 9. That's 12 trips, and that is one trip every five minutes, if you divide it into a peak hour. And it's 26 in the evening, so it's one every two-plus minutes in the evening peak, which is what, 4 to 5 or 5 to 6? Greg, which do we use here? I just didn't see it this morning. Whatever. Yeah, whatever. But it's usually 4:30 to 5:30, something in that room. So when we look at those numbers, we have to picture the impacts, and they're pretty de minimis in terms of at 12 and 26 at the peak hours. And the assumption is the busiest time on the streets is at peak, and that the rest of the hours are not as busy, so there's more transportation capacity on streets in the off-peak time. So when we get the numbers for the peak hours, that really helps us to nail exactly what kind of impacts there'd be, because we would expect the most congestion from a new project to be in the morning and the evening peak on a weekday. So I did want to just maybe put that in context for everybody.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Beverly. Any other comments for the attorney before?
I guess the only other question I had, I mean, we have the recording of this meeting, but was there going to be any attempt to try to make the shadow study into a submission?
Yes, and there have been some technical difficulties today in doing that, but the intention is to submit the slides, so that you will have them in hard copy and also available for people to view.
Fantastic. I think that at this point, we need a motion to continue to January 20 or June 20.
Yes, I agree, because we received the traffic study late today, so none of us have had a chance to really read it, as well as the other information, which I want to remind everybody is publicly available on the Planning Board website on the city of Gloucester. You can click on the link there to go to see all of the files that are being submitted. So I move that we continue the major project review for 20 Main Street to our meeting of June 20, 2024.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion by Jane Ramsen, seconded by Hank McCarle. Roll call vote, please.
Member Noonan?
Yes.
Member McCarle?
Yes.
Member Bookin?
Yes.
Member Cook?
Yes.
Member Ramsen?
Yes.
Member Rosen?
Yes.
And member Henry?
Yes.
Thanks, Sean. Thank you. So next, under the agenda this evening is a public hearing. This is a request for extension of the Cluster Development Special Permit issued to Carrigan Development LLC for a 12-single-family home cluster development to be located at 186 Concord Street, Gloucester, Mass., Assessor's Map 248, Lot 14. Representation, Attorney Ellison. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, again, for the record. Deborah Ellison, Ellison Law Office, 63 Middle Street, Gloucester. The property owner is Carrigan Development LLC. The principal is Michael Carrigan, and he is here this evening. We're here to request a second extension of the special permit that was issued on September 20, 2018, for a cluster development of 12 homes on a 21.5-acre lot. The special permit was extended in 2022 for two years and is set to expire on July 9, 2024. My client is seeking the second extension because there have been appeals before DEP that were only recently dismissed, and they were dismissed with prejudice. The appeals were by abutters, and Mr. Carrigan is now working to obtain the Board of Health approval of the septic system design. The only question before you tonight is why Mr. Carrigan has not begun to build the cluster development. And the answer to that question is that he's been held up by these appeals that have been pending since the issuance of the special permit, which is over five years ago, and those appeals may not be over yet. I don't think any of us thought, when we saw this project, that we'd be in limbo five years later, but we are, and least of all, Mr. Carrigan didn't think so. So I'll give you a brief outline of the appeal timeline. In September 25, 2018, Ms. Fricklin appealed the Planning Board decision to land court. That was voluntarily dismissed by her three months later, on December 20, 2018, again dismissed with prejudice and waiving all rights of appeal. On April 4, 2018, Mr. Carrigan filed for a notice of intent for the project. On September 20, 2018, the Conservation Commission issued an order of conditions in Mr. Carrigan's favor. The abutters appealed to DEP. On May 4, 2021, DEP issued a superseding order again in favor of Mr. Carrigan. That was appealed to the DEP Office of Appeals and Dispute Resolutions. A hearing was held on December 9, 2021, and again, they affirmed the decision in favor of Mr. Carrigan on May 31, 2023. The abutters again appealed to the Superior Court. That was dismissed with prejudice in January 2024. It's been the practice of the abutters to prosecute the appeals until it gets to court, where they have to hire an attorney to represent them, and then they dismiss the appeal. Mr. Carrigan has diligently pursued all of the appeals at great cost, and he's prevailed in all of the appeals. Once the latest appeal was dismissed, he turned his attention to the septic system design approval. design approval, and that design has been submitted to the Board of Health for review. There were a large number of comments that were provided by the Board of Health agent, and it took some time to address those, but those have been addressed. The vast majority of them only required minor changes of the plans. Mr. Carrigan's engineers have responded to all of the comments, and Mr. Carrigan and his engineers expect to obtain Board of Health approval. However, the issuance of the Board of Health approval is also subject to appeal, and we fully expect that it will be appealed and further delay this project. Therefore, requesting another extension of two years to allow time to obtain the septic design approval from the Board of Health and to begin the project. Under GZO one-point-eight-point-six, the Planning Board can extend the permit expiration date for good cause, and also under special permit, GZO five-point-nine-eleven, to we are asking you to amend condition number fifteen of the special permit to expend the extend the expiration date to July ninth, twenty twenty-six. Again, the standard is for good cause. The applicant's project has been under appeal for the last five years. I would suggest to you that's ample good cause to extend the permit. The applicant's project, it's ironic that the very people that have caused the delay are here tonight to argue that the extension shouldn't be granted. Every time we come here, it costs my client time and money, and it's exactly what the abutters are seeking to do. I would suggest to you that you cannot give the abutters the power to kill the project by having it appealed until a board will no longer grant extensions. So we respectfully ask you to extend this project, and I suggest that the comments tonight are related solely to the extension and not to any of the merits of the project, which have already been determined. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Attorney Ellison. Questions from board members? David?
Uh, it's a question for Greg or perhaps Attorney Ellison. Are there any statute of limitations on the number of times that uh application can be extended?
No, and the reason for that is that if that were the case, then the way to make sure that a project never happened was to just delay it as long as you could until extensions were no longer allowed. So it would defeat the purpose of, you know, obtaining more housing in different towns.
And the other question I have is um have any of the changes or all of the changes been regarding the plan been addressed by the applicant?
Yes.
Board of Health's satisfaction?
They the plan was submitted to the Board of Health, and the Board of Health has not reviewed them yet.
Thank you, Attorney Ellison. So this is a public hearing, um, and I would like to uh open it to comment um and anybody that would like to speak in favor, and we're talking about the extension of the this uh special permit. Um, we're not talking about the merits of the project, we're talking about the extension. Um, so if you'd like to come and speak in favor, you can come to the lectern. There is a microphone there. I'd ask you to state your name and address for the record, and please keep your comments to three minutes. Seeing none, um, we will now take a comment for people that are exposed or opposed to the extension uh of this cluster development. Again, please come to the lectern, uh state your name and address for the record, and Turn the microphone on for you.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Pete Redosha. I live at two fifty-nine Concord Street, Gloucester. I'm an active member of Preserve West Gloucester. Um, I appreciate each of the board members' time and personal commitment to improving our city. I'm a concerned citizen that could be impacted by the project. Why? Our property is located at the bottom of the hill from the proposed project. Any compromises to the cluster's septic system will impact our property, our neighbor's property, the well water we drink, and the great marsh. History, Attorney Ellison went through it, but six years ago, our community brought forward concerns that the site was not capable of supporting the size and density of the proposed cluster. The main reasons are because there is no public sewage there, and there's no public water source, meaning wells and on-premise sewer system system. The Planning Board granted a special permit contingent upon other city boards giving their approvals, including the Board of Health, which provided an approval letter dated June sixth, twenty eighteen. The letter stated, "The Board of Health can state that the site has been found to have sufficient soils," I emphasize soils, "and space for the design of an onsite wastewater treatment system that can support thirty-four bedrooms." In twenty twenty-two, the Board granted an extension to the special permit. In twenty twenty-three, Carrigan submitted a definitive septic system design to the Board of Health. The Board of Health sent the septic system design out for a third-party review. Eighty-seven deficiencies and areas of concern were identified, eighty-seven, twenty general concerns, six related to building sewer, thirteen related to the septic tank, seventeen related to the pump chamber, eighteen related to soil data, ten related to leaching facility, three related to pressure and gravity sewer lines. I'm going to focus for a minute on the soil data section. Soil data, and this comes right from the evaluation which is appended to this. Soil tests, soil test data was gathered by Carrigan's engineer in two thousand and nine and submitted to the Board of Health. The results showed that all the test pits, primary and reserve, had issues. Soil data requirements were not met, data and documentation was incomplete. The approving Board of Health letter in twenty eighteen to the Planning Board was based on the two thousand and nine data. That was also included with the definitive septic plan that was evaluated, and they looked at it. So they've looked at the soil data that was included, and that letter was um written on. The two thousand now data, two thousand and nine data, has been proven by the third-party evaluation to be incorrect and deficient. I'm going to read you two examples. On the soil evaluation form eleven for the test pit one-twenty-seven and one-twenty-eight, one-twenty-nine, and one-thirty, sections B, C, and E, NF were incomplete. On the soil evaluation form eleven, test pit one-twenty-seven and one-twenty-eight, ledge was not noted in the test pit, and this was documented by the Board of Health representative in the field notebook. So in that case, the representative from the Board of Health saw ledge in a test pit, but it was not reflected in the notes presented by the developer. Based upon the current information provided by the third-party review, it is unlikely that the Board of Health now would be able to provide a letter indicating that the site has been found to have sufficient soils and space for the design of an onsite wastewater treatment system that can support a thirty-four-bedroom development. It is interesting to note
Peter.
that in Deborah Eliason's request for a special permit extension, I'm almost done, she acknowledges doubt in the property's ability to adequately support an onsite waste system by writing this statement. The current uncertainty of the common septic system permit. We can all acknowledge that the site has significant challenges. We are asking you to include the current relevant information in your decision-making process in response to Carrigan's request, and to ensure that you have a valid and current approval from the Board of Health required by your customer cluster evaluation process. The third-party review raises serious doubt as to whether the parcel of land will support the current proposed development plan. And I also want to state one thing. We was in, I was in constant, we've been in contact with the Board of Health, and I asked one question of the Board of Health. Has there been any information that has been submitted, new, based on the soil test or the septic plan, since the definitive plan was in was implemented? The answer was absolutely not. So the statement saying
Sir.
that information came back is not correct. They have not responded to any of the deficiencies as of this time. Thank you.
Okay, so you're you understand what's before this board this evening is an extension of a permit. We do not have the purview of the Health Department.
I'm not asking you to be Title V people. What I'm asking you to do is the permit that you gave as a special permit was extended, was given based upon a letter from the Board of Health that was based upon data that was inappropriate and not accurate, that was submitted by the developer. It's been proven by the evaluation. What I'm saying is, go to the Board of Health, ask them if they would still provide that letter. I tend to say they wouldn't.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I I just wanted to point out, I that based on his comments, I assume other people are going to comment uh similarly, just want to refer back to the fact that in the special permit that was issued back in two thousand and eighteen, um, condition number seven is that a final approval of a septic system by the Board of Health has to be achieved before the applicant can start construction in any way. And I I again, as you just said, I I think that we we are not in the septic business or a Board of Health business. The um protection for construction in the event that a septic system can't be developed is contained within the the special permit that we issued, and I think, again, the the focus should be on the special permit and the planning.
To confirm what Sean is saying, I can read the condition to you, because it is only two sentences. The condition in the current permit, which the only matter before us is whether or not to extend the deadline of said permit, says, "Prior to any construction, a final onsite septic plan identifying all components must be approved by the Board of Health. Additionally, individual wells for dwelling units must satisfy all public health and safety regulations." There's nothing more that the Planning Board can do about this, and the only matter that we have any jurisdiction over tonight is this one-point-eight-point-six, except for good cause found by the special permit granting authority after due notice on a public hearing. If construction under a special permit is not substantially commenced within two years of said permit, that we have the opportunity to extend that permit. That is the only matter before us tonight and that we are allowed to opine on.
Thank you. Um, anybody else would like to come forward and and speak uh on the uh extension of the special permit?
Yes, thanks. My name is Grant Clark, two seventy-nine Concord Street. I'd like to just
Make sure, yeah, thank you.
Oh, thank you. I I'd like to just uh clarify what Mr. Redosha was pointing to, because I think there's some slippery regulatory issues here, and we don't want you to misunderstand the point he was trying to make, because we do believe it is within your jurisdiction here tonight. What he was pointing to was that for the last six years, the Planning Board has relied upon a series of emails from Max Schenck in twenty eighteen to state that the site appeared to be suitable for the septic. Now, that's in your cluster regulation. You must have that, and you knew that. You you received it, and you've relied on, and we've talked about this in past hearings. What Mr. Redosha was pointing out is that as of right now, based upon the Board of Health's uh definitive study of that septic plan, they have shown that that site is not suitable with regard to soils and space. And if you look at the findings and then you think about that, and all I'm asking you is think about this, is the approval that you've been relying on for the last six years still valid, s- still factually accurate in light of the many findings of the Board of Health? And that approval that you need is squarely within your jurisdiction, and we submit it was va- it was important when the initial permit was issued, when the first extension was issued, and it's relevant now. And all we're asking you to do is to obtain some type of legal opinion, independent opinion, as to whether you still are holding a valid approval. That's the only point Pete was trying to make. And I would just add as well that Ms. Eliason has made a number of uh characterizations of the litigation that's gone on at DEP, as if it's frivolous, intended only for delay. She might be able to tell you the number of stormwater management changes that were wrought in the course of that litigation, the protection of the certified vernal pool. The uh the uh citizens have achieved significant relief in the course of that litigation, and the fact that they got a superseding order of conditions in the end does not detract from that. Thank you.
Anybody else would like to speak on this extension of a special permit this evening? Again, ask you to use the microphone very close to your mouth so everybody can hear and just your name and address for the record.
Camille Vasenti, one fifty-eight Essex Ave. Um, while I see the argument to simply extend the Carrigan special permit due to a good cause, given the issues with its stormwater plan, it is important to address why yet another extension is needed. A final septic plan still has not been approved six years after Planning Board approval. There was Board of Health approval in twenty eighteen, as the Health Department found space and capacity for wastewater treatment, with the condition that it must satisfy all public health and safety regulations. GZO five-point-nine-point-four-point-two requires subdivision rules and regulations three-point-three review by Board of Health. Three-point-three C states that every building lot that cannot be served by a connection to the municipal power uh sewer system shall be provided with a sewage disposal system approved by the Board of Health. To me, this reads that subdivision rules and regulations three-point-three must be satisfied satisfied prior to Planning Board approval, and it was not. While I appreciate the use of third-party reviews for these larger projects, a review of a septic plan would have been very informative as to viability of the project at that time. It seems logical that an approved septic plan would be required in order to issue a special permit in the first place, as deficiencies wouldn't be known until a plan was submitted. For future projects, um, I just ask you to consider a change of process. Is there a better way to incorporate feedback from all departments in these larger projects? Where there's an open discussion back and forth between departments, it'd be easier for developers to make adjustments to plans to better meet safety regulations and wetlands protections. It would be better to keep public hearings open until they've been approved by other departments. After approval from all departments, it will inform the Planning Board if these are actual viable projects worthy of special permits. It seems like that was the intention of the regulations. In regards to the applicant request for a two-year extension citing GZO one-point-eight-point-six and five-point-nine-point-eleven for a good cause, um, can the applicant elaborate on the timing of the Board of Health's submittal and why there is a holdup? Is there a timeline beyond, quote, expects to submit a response to the comments shortly and anticipates that all the comments will be satisfactorily addressed? Uh, the applicant states that due to the time needed for prior to litigation of this project, they will need a two-year extension. There's no guarantee that the Board of Health findings will be appealed. If you do plan to grant an extension, I re- request you grant a one-year extension, as you did recently, uh, for another cluster development. If more time is needed, the applicant can return in a year and update and request another extension, if and only if for good cause is found after yet another year. Thank you.
Thanks, Camille. Anybody else like to speak on this issue? Again, just to make sure the microphone's nice and close to your mouth and the name and address for the record.
Robert Seraphine, eighty-two Bray Street. I ask you not to vote until somehow the Board of Health diecasts the five houses that were already put on those properties, and I guarantee you the source going in the great marsh, guaranteed. You can't build houses on rock with a septic system, impossible. Thank you. I ask you not to vote.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else like to speak this evening? Can I hear you, Carrie? There's a little, there's a little switch.
Hello?
Here we go.
Uh, my name's Carrie Fricklin. I live at two fifty Concord Street, where I have a composting uh business and apple orchard. Um, I'm a direct butter to the proposed project at one eighty-six Concord Street. I'm asking you, please, to um reconsider what the effects of this project will do to the surrounding ecosystem, AC, CC. to the surrounding ecosystem, ACCE, the abutting vernal pool, considered by the Cape Ann Vernal Pool team to be the largest and the most prolific in all of Cape Ann, as well as all of the neighbors who live there. We will forever have to live with this negative, the negative effects of this project, and the developer does not. The sole purpose of a cluster development, according to the Gloucester regulations, is to conserve and protect nature. I can't see how this project does that. The most recent evidence of this was provided by the Gloucester Board of Health, who issued 94 deficiencies on the definitive system design plan. To date, they have not been addressed. It has been 11 months since the applicant was notified of the discrepancies, and apparently no steps have been taken to perform required field work. Yet they still claim that they were held back by a butter appeals through no fault of its own. Our appeals highlighted the deficiencies in the applicant's stormwater plans where he was forced to redesign them several times and try to adequately protect the wetland resources. According to the Gloucester Rules and Regulations, which is in accordance with the Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Section 81U, a definitive plan disproved by the Board of Health shall not be approved by the planning board until the deficiencies noted by the Board of Health have been corrected. And that the applicant, and this is a direct quote from the Gloucester Rules and Regulations, eh, Regulations and Mass General Law, shall comply with the Board of Health requirements, including percolation tests and test excavations before, in order to attain your planning board approval. In regards to the perk tests and test excavations, 17 of the 94 deficiencies on the plan review involved the soil data stating that they do not match Board of Health field notes data documenting ledge, are incomplete and do not meet the requirements. In the last special permit extension, we brought up the evidence of ledge in the field notes and on the plan. Attorney Eliason responded that there is no ledge in the septic. It's a boulder. Carrigan's engineer has also claimed in a statement in our appeal to the DEP that no ledge, bedrock, or refusal were encountered in any of these test holes. These statements are contrary to the Board of Health witness's documentation in the field notes. Based on the data provided by Mr. Carrigan's definitive cluster plan and the Board of Health's 94 deficiencies, it appears he has never met the requirements to obtain approval from the Board of Health. The 2018 memo from Max Schenck used as your approval was written without justification and no legitimate basis for writing that they have sufficient soils and space to support a 34-bedroom development. During the last permit extension, the planning board had stated in regard to the Board of Health, if those conditions aren't met, the special permit and building permit will not be issued. Deborah Eliason's claims that the planning board's decision is final. According to the Gloucester Rules and Regulations, in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Section 81W, the planning board shall have the power to modify, amend, or rescind its approval of the plan. And to add to the board members' comment about statutes of limitations, 5.3 rescission in the Gloucester Regulations states that failure for the developer to initiate construction within seven years of the definitive plan shall constitute rescission of the approval. Please consider everything I've just said in the ecosystem and citizens of Gloucester that will be impacted forever. Thank you very much.
Anybody else like to speak? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Jane Fox, 14 Becker Circle, Gloucester Math.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Based on my research, it appears that Carrigan Development bought the 29.23 acre property in 2009 for $500,000. Since then, the property has been subdivided. The 2.03 acre lot, which is now 118 Bray Street, and the 3.21 acre lot, which is now 128 Bray Street, were sold in 2016 to Scott Real Estate for $155,000 and $170,000 respectively. Single-family dwellings were built on each lot. In 2018, 118 Bray Street sold for $832,500. $832,500. In 2023, 122 Bray Street was sold for $625,000. The 2.54 acre lot, which is now 128 Bray Street, was sold in 2016 to G Russo for $200,000, who then built a single-family dwelling in 2017. The desire to develop this partial of land has been pursued for years and has caused a financial burden and tremendous heartache to residents of West Gloucester, especially those involved with the preserved West Gloucester community. With all the new zoning amendments and loopholes, the remaining 21.45 acres is again being considered for development. However, the proposal is to squeeze a 12-single-family unit cluster on a tiny section of this lot. With all due respect, the remaining acreage is either wetlands or unsuitable land for development. Please note that it has already been brought to your attention that expert reviews show there are 94 deficiencies or areas of concern. In addition, I would like to emphasize that this project will have a significant effect on the adjacent green belt and its wildlife, and the saltwater marshes and its marine habitat. Until this city provides adequate infrastructure improvements such as sewer, sewer services, and proper drainage for water runoff, I urge the planning board to vote no on granting a two-year extension on the current special permit. I understand that there is a shortage of affordable housing. The three homes on the subdivided lots are currently assessed at $2.98 million, which is, which for most citizens is not affordable. Is the 10 single-family units being sold as housing, is the 10 single-family units being sold as housing that is affordable, or is it being sold by a developer looking to make an enormous profit at our expense? City officials need to protect the city from developers who merely think of dollar signs and do not care about preserving this beautiful seaside community. We do need housing, but this needs to be done responsibly, keeping in mind the pros and cons of each development that is given to the planning board for contemplation. Please remember that we need to make decisions that are best for the current and future city of Gloucester and its residents. Please build where it is, where it is best. Taken into consideration conservation of surrounding areas. Thank you for listening.
I'd ask you to submit that through the clerk's office. And so if anybody else, and Peter as well, if you have this in an email format, it's the best way to do it. Typically, it's a 48-hour notice before you come to a meeting. So I want this to make sure it's public record. So through the clerk's office, and it will become public record, sir. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Attorney Michael McMahon. I live at 9 Digby Lane, West Gloucester. I'll be brief. You've heard many arguments tonight. I think the most important argument you've heard is the coordination of the city ordinances in such a way as we have known for years that the Board of Health permission, or permit, is intrinsic to the planning of the developments. For many years, that hasn't been the case. We're hoping, as I think many of the city officials are hoping, that you start to enforce the actual intent of the ordinance structure, which is to have the Board of Health permission before you go forward. That didn't happen in this case. But tonight, you're faced with the opportunity to make a decision. That opportunity is not mandatory. If you find a good cause, that doesn't mean you have to approve. It's left to your discretion. And I'd ask that you use your discretion to deny. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else like to be on the record this evening? Yes, sir.
My own?
Yes, you are.
Oh, good. Good evening. My name is Dennis McGurk. I live at 283 Concord Street in Gloucester.
Don't get any closer, Dennis.
I notice on a regular basis-
On the mic, please. Thank you.
I notice on a regular basis now that on a rainy day, Concord Street turns into a series of small rivers. It flows down Concord Street, taking right-hand turn into my driveway, into my yard, down into the marsh. That didn't used to happen. And it's very clear by that simple example that we have a problem. And somehow, we've let the details of this, this, all the legalities here and the, we've let it obscure our mission. We're not doing enough to save our neighborhoods and the environment. And listening to Mr. Radosha, one question jumps out at me, and I think Mr. Clark brought it up. Does a planning board get outside legal advice? After six years, the outside advice surely gave the Board of Health clarity. Could it do the same for you? The easy development projects in Gloucester have been done. Now it's time for the developers to work on the hard stuff. And there's a reason why this project has dragged on, if you want to call it that, for six years. It's a terrible and badly conceived project, and it needs to be stopped. Our group has spent six years fighting a poorly conceived project. It was our fight, it was our time, it was our money, and a lot of hours, not the city's, not directly. And during that time, numerous, numerous septic plans were submitted by the developer and the Board of Health, to the Board of Health, and they failed. And as we know now, their most recent plan sent out by the Board of Health to an independent third party, good thing, came back and results were shocking. 94 deficiencies is outrageous. In scholastic terms, the developers' engineers should get an F. They failed. And it's hardly grounds to continue giving this project further life. Thank you.
Anybody else this evening? Yes, sir.
Jim McTiernan, 14 Coles Island Road, Gloucester. This property is just across Concord Street from our property. I'll be brief as well, and I guess on the agenda tonight is an extension. But in light of what, what everyone else has said, I'd like you to reconsider approval of this cluster zoning project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else this evening? Seeing none? Yeah, I don't see anybody with their hands raised.
Do we, do we close a public hearing and then make a decision on?
Can we hear from Attorney Eliason?
I was gonna say-
In order to respond.
Before that, if, if there's anybody that's watching the, the meeting online, if you want to raise your hand to be recognized, we're still in the public comment period. Thank you, Greg. So at the bottom of your screen, there should be a raise your hand button. Select that will permission you to speak. Seeing none. Attorney Ellison, if you'd like to respond to some comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It seems clear to me that the comments people are here to relitigate the planning board's decision, and that's not why we're here tonight. The planning board decision was appealed by the abutters, as I said. Three months later, they dismissed it, and they dismissed it without any further rights of appeal. That was their opportunity to question your decision and determine whether or not it was correct. The court could have done that, but they voluntarily dismissed that case. Board of Health is now looking at the septic system. Despite what you heard tonight, a new plan addressing all of the comments that the Board of Health raised through their third-party review have been provided to the Board of Health. And the comments were not provided until the DEP appeal was over because there was no, there was a concern that perhaps there could be further changes, or the DEP would have found against my client. It wasn't expected, but if that had happened, going down the road of getting Board of Health approval would have only implicated having to go back for a modification. So the, it's up to the Board of Health to determine whether the septic is adequate or not. If the septic is not adequate, the Board of Health determines that. Then you have that condition in the planning board decisions that protects against the development. So I would just urge you to stick to what is before you tonight, which is the extension. We are asking for a two-year extension because we do expect that it will take a little bit of time to go through the Board of Health, and then we do anticipate that there could be an appeal. And so two years is not unreasonable. Otherwise, my clients back every so often to have to address this in front of you and hear the same case litigated over and over again. Happy to answer any questions, but that's all I have for comment.
Thank you, Attorney Ellison.
I've heard, we have heard all of your comments tonight, and I, I can't speak for my colleagues, but I understand that this is a really important issue to all of you. It's a very emotional issue, and we understand that you have a lot of objections. The Board of Health stuff, again, is not in our purview. There is a condition in the permit that says that if it doesn't pass muster by the Board of Health, then the project can't go forward. So you really do have to take that up with the Board of Health. We, we don't have any experts on this board to address those issues. I did also hear a number of sort of legal arguments, I guess. One speaker asked if we could get a legal opinion as to whether or not we are currently holding a valid approval that we could even give an extension to. Somebody talked about whether or not, in the other part of the GZO, which I actually admit I could not find, even though I looked it up, whether there was a seven-year sunset clause, if you will, and somebody else had asked if we have any outside legal advice. So luckily, we do have tonight, sitting in our audience, Suzanne Egan, who is the city council. So I would love it if she could speak to the planning board and give us her opinion on these issues.
Thank you. Good evening. Suzanne Egan, General Counsel for the City of Gloucester. So I'll address those three issues that you just posed. One is whether you have a valid special permit before you tonight, and that, I believe that's the first question you asked. And you do have a valid special permit before you tonight. What is before you is a special permit that was granted by this board. It continues to be valid. The extension is before you. And so that is something that you can review, and that is valid. Your second question was, if you could state it again, sorry.
It's just whether or not we have outside legal advice, and we have you, so.
Yes. So yes, I'm available. I speak regularly with a planning director and who presumably conveys our discussions to this board. And so this board does act with legal advice. And if there's ever any questions, you can certainly contact my office, and we'll provide that advice. And then the third question was-
Somebody mentioned that there was somewhere in the GZO, something about seven years, where it might not be able to be extended.
So this, so what is before you tonight is an extension for a special permit under the GZO and also under the general law that allows this planning board to issue an extension on a special permit. That is what is the relevant law. Whether, there is no specific issue as to something sunsetting within that seven-year period. That's not relevant to special permits, but the request for the extension is relevant.
Thank you. Thank you.
Oh. Hi, Jane.
Yeah. You know I'm never done. I heard one more comment that might be worth discussing among us, which was somebody had proposed a one-year instead of a two-year extension. And just trying to gather my thoughts, the reason for needing an extension was, quote-unquote, "good cause", you know, and it's clearly the appeals that have prevented, appeals and potentially approval by the Board of Health that have prevented any construction from starting. But since we don't have any purview over the Board of Health, really, the good cause, as far as we're concerned, is the inability of the applicant to start the project because of all the appeals. So I have no problem with a two-year extension. But I don't want anyone to think that I'm not thinking about it. I get why you're asking for a one-year extension, and I get that you want more oversight rather than less. But given the complexity of what the applicant is facing, I think two years is appropriate, and that's what we normally do.
Thank you, Jane. Before we close the public comment period on this extension, I'd like to give anybody else an opportunity to speak before we move forward with our meeting this evening. So if anybody that hasn't spoke yet, this is the opportunity. Otherwise, we'll close the public comment period. Carrie? I'd like to, if anybody hasn't spoke, if there's anybody sort of on the fence, I would encourage you to do that at this time. Otherwise, I'll defer to Ms. Fricklin.
I'm just wondering why the amendment states, and also in the general law, that, you know, forty-five days after a developer submits his definitive plan, the Board of Health has to approve or deny that plan based on test pit excavations and perk tests. And he has never had that from the beginning. It says right in the Gloucester Rules and Regulations that that is a requirement. And according to mass general law, I don't know why he got to the point that he did without having that in place.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Beverly?
Can Attorney Ellison respond to that? It would be helpful to have her viewpoint on that matter.
I'm not certain what Ms. Fricklin is referring to. I think what she's saying, referring to are issues that were before this planning board, when the special permit was before the planning board. And she might be referring to the subdivision rules and regulations, but this is a special permit. With regard to the one-year, I would like to say that the one instance that I'm aware of, where you have done only a one-year extension, was where the delays were due to the developer and not something that was completely out of his or her control. So I would ask strongly that you grant a two-year extension.
Thank you. Anybody else that hasn't spoken yet? No?
Camille Vasanti, 158 SXF. Just a clarification of when something would happen, if there was an idea that something changed with the project, with the stormwater plan, and it, how would it go back to a public hearing if something has changed? Is there, how would you do that? Would you talk to Greg separate? I understand outside of this hearing, but it's related to this hearing. So I was wondering procedurally how to do that. Does the question make sense?
And I just want, I'll just clarify a couple of things. So the sequencing, and I'm not just responding to you. I'm gonna respond to a couple of things, so you don't have to stand there. You know, the sequence and the multiple jurisdictions that are required for any kind of larger land use development are complex. Some of them have very clear, specific time points where a permit must be obtained. And other jurisdictions actually are allowed to be the last in line. So I can see that there could be an instance where there are significant conservation issues, for instance, that arise. All these permits that are come through the planning board are referred to department staff, and in some cases, also boards. But the Conservation Commission gets to go last. So I could see that one could make an argument of saying, "Planning board, why didn't you wait and see what the Conservation Commission does?" But by statute, they're actually required to be last. Likewise, there are milestones and approvals that have to be granted through the planning board process. In a lot of ways, the cluster development also mirrors some of the language and procedure of the subdivision regulations. And there is that forty-five-day clock for the Board of Health to provide input into the process. And it is really a go-no-go situation, where if they say, "Planning board, we think you should deny this based on these particular findings that they make", if there were no evaluation of a property and it was forwarded to the planning board for approval, that would probably be pretty good grounds. There was a report that was submitted based on an assessment of the information at the time. The board did rely on that. And the board backed up its condition and the planning, and the Board of Health with a condition that says, "This project doesn't go forward until it has a final wastewater solution, a finer wastewater plan." So those steps have been taken. If there is a modification of an element of a project, sometimes based on field conditions, things are not, things are engineered, but there are always surprises. And it rises to the level of something that's inconsistent with the approved plans. It's, at that point, it has to be a determination, usually through my office and then through referral to the planning board, whether it rises to the point of changing the conditions of approval. If there are modifications, whether in geography or geometry of things to a certain extent, they may or may not rise to the level of requiring a public hearing. If something is significant enough to modify the project that it changes the board's original intent, and that request can be made to the planning board, then they might reopen the hearing and have to evaluate it further and perhaps even condition it further if the project were to change. So I hope that helps.
Thank you, Greg. Yeah, just a minute, Peter, if that's possible. So, yes, please.
Pete Ridosha, 259 Concord Street. There's one thing that I just want to state, because I'm concerned about it. And Greg, this may be something that I'm gonna ask you to look into, is that we've had contact with the Board of Health Sanitarium's office up until a day and a half ago. And up until then, there has been no information that has come back from the-
There was a submission this morning.
Oh.
There was.
Thanks.
Sorry.
I appreciate that.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay.
And again, I don't manage every department in the city either. I'm managing a couple of positions right now, but I can confirm that there was a submission this morning.
At the discretion of the chair, please. The floor is yours.
Thank you. I'll be brief again. Grant Clark, 279 Concord Street. In following up on Mr. Rosen's, excuse me, Mr. Caddam Torrey's comment, rather, I just want to make sure, and particularly for the City Council here too, I appreciate the city attorney being here. I want to make sure that the legal point is not being missed here. You referred, Greg, to the 2018 approval that the cluster regulation requires you to get. Now admittedly, it's a preliminary thing. The Board of Health goes out, they eyeball the site, and that's why you get something that looks like Max Schenck's letter saying, "Eh, looks like there's enough dirt there." Okay? But you have to have that before you can issue the special permit. And that was issued six years ago. You've been relying on it every day, right up until today. You're still relying on it. And what we're saying is that the Board of Health has effectively nullified that by issuing the ninety-four deficiency report. Because that report, if you read it, and I urge you to, shows you that the Schenck letter could not be written today. So you're holding something in your hand that you're still relying on, that could not be issued today. And that's the issue we're asking you to look at, and the city attorney, frankly, to look at that. And if you're saying, "Well, it's too late, because you didn't sue the Board of Health", we'd at least like that on the record, that you understand that the facts don't support that approval, but it's just too late. Thank you.
So to reassure you, sir, as the city solicitor had just stated for the record, that we have a valid special permit in force. Just reiterating what the city solicitor stated. Now, I don't need any response. I'm just saying. Okay. So we're all in agreement, there is a valid permit. So the burden of proof, the burden of proof for the applicant is to generate a, through the Board of Health, a plan that will support the housing that's on this project. If he cannot do that, then the project is null and void. But he has, we need to give him the opportunity to produce that information and come back and meet the conditions, as the planning director had just stated to you guys as well. And we're gonna have, you know, that's the next step that we have to take. Attorney Ellison?
Very quickly, Mr. Chairman, the only thing I want to point out is the Board of Health hasn't denied anything. And so the opposition is trying to have you think that the Board of Health has determined that the septic system is not viable, and that's absolutely not the case.
Thank you. So at this point, I'm compelled to close the public comment period.
I move that we close the public hearing for the request for extension of the Cluster Development Special Permit issued to Carrigan Development LLC at 186 Concord Street.
Second.
We have a motion by Jane Ramsden and a second by Beverly Bookin. We need a roll call vote, please.
Member Noonan?
Yes.
Member McCarroll?
Yes.
Member Bookin?
Yes.
Member Cook?
Yes.
Member Ramsden?
Yes.
Member Rosen?
Yes.
Member Henry?
Yes.
Thank you, Sean. So amongst board members, I think the first issue to discuss would be just the term of the extension. And again, we had a previous extension two weeks ago, was it? That we, about a month and a half? About a month ago. So in that case, this was a developer delay. We chose to shorten that. And again, every decision made by this board stands out on its own merits. I'm inclined to grant the two-year extension based on the complexity of this particular issue. I think I had no sense in 2018 that we'd be here in 2024 discussing this. But again, anything that comes before this board, at least my hope is that when the project starts, and then when it's completed, it's a better project. And that's what we're here to do, frankly. So that's my position on the two-year component. Beverly?
I concur. This has been a project that has been very highly disputed since the very beginning, and I think all of us are aware of the strong feelings of the neighborhood. None of us have a vested interest in the outcome of this, any financial or otherwise. And our job is to balance the legitimate rights of the property owner against the concerns raised by his neighbors. And I think we have done that as best of our, to best of our ability. We want to make sure that the property owner has a fair and reasonable opportunity to bring this project forward. My concern about the arguments made by some of the opponents here tonight is that our decision was flawed, not just because of the issue of the septic system, but in general, many, many objections were raised. And I believe that the initial appeal was based on a much broader set of standards of flaws with our decision than simply the one having to do with the septic system. And I believe that the adjudication, that that court case was dismissed. As a result, I think that our decision stands. We considered all of the criteria for an approval of a cluster subject to other boards and departments favoring it, which is a standard condition. But I think it was, I remember at the time, I remember Jane saying, "We know that opponents have a strong feeling, but there is no grounds that the applicant has made a sound case for this cluster development at this location, and we have no grounds to deny it." And so for that reason, I don't think it's fair for the opponents to ask us to consider withdrawing our approval. It's very clear, the condition says, that should the Health Department not approve the septic system, that in fact, the project will not go forward. And we feel that, given the amount of delay and the complexity of the issue, that two years is really a reasonable amount for the property owner to take a last stab at having his, being able to move forward with the project, knowing that if it fails at the Health Department, that it will fail. So I feel that we have acted appropriately. Our city attorney, I think, has concurred that that's the position that we are in. And as a result, I would urge my fellow members to approve a two-year extension.
David?
I would concur with that, Beverly. I do think that it is incumbent upon the applicant to make sure that all of those ninety-four deficiencies have been addressed. And if they cannot be addressed, then that's an issue that needs to be addressed by this board, perhaps with a resubmission of a plan.
Any other comments?
I think it's important to note that there've been a lot of issues raised here. But our job is to be, as my colleague has pointed out, we have to be fair to all parties. And I think that it's only reasonable that we abide by an extension. To ask us to not have that opportunity, I think denies the applicant the opportunity to deal with the thing with the Board of Health. And it is contingent on the approval of the Board of Health. And that's what we depend upon. We do not make the decisions the Board of Health does. And it's contingent, and I agree with my colleague and would so vote for the extension. Would you like to motion, Mr. Chairman?
I'd like to talk to the guy on the West Coast for a second.
Right ahead.
Sean?
Yeah, I concur. I understand and appreciate everyone's concerns with ensuring that an adequate septic system is created if this development's gonna go forward. But again, the planning board doesn't design septic systems, and the Board of Health doesn't do subdivisions or cluster developments. We, our, now, you're making, you're gonna embarrass me by showing me to everybody. I think we stick in our lanes. There are multiple layers for every project to go through. And I think it would be wrong for us to deny this extension based on the fact that the applicant is still going through the process with the Board of Health, particularly because our special permit, condition in our special permit explicitly states that the project can't go forward until there's an adequate septic system approved by the Board of Health. So as Rick stated earlier, if that doesn't happen, the project doesn't happen, whether we do the extension or not. So I'm in favor of granting the extension and allowing the situation with the Board of Health to play out.
Thank you, Sean.
I move that we grant a two-year extension of the Cluster Development Special Permit issued to Carrigan Development LLC for a twelve-single-family home cluster development to be located at 186 Concord Street in Gloucester. And that would bring the permit expiration date to July something, 2026. Nineteen?
July nine.
July nine, 2026.
We have a motion. They need a second, please. So we have a motion by Jane Ramsden, seconded by Mr. Rosen. Need a roll call vote, please.
Member Noonan?
Yes.
Member McCarroll? Member Bookin?
Yes.
Member Cook?
Yes.
Member Ramsden?
Yes.
Member Rosen?
Yes.
And Member Henry?
Yes.
Thank you. Got more meeting to have, and there's a lot more going on. Thank you. Oh, heckling, Jane. Okay, next under other business this evening is a discussion for a request for release of covenant at 50 Atlantic Avenue Common Driveway.
So this is reappearing on the agenda. The submission was requested for release of the covenant over the building or sale of the four lots that are served by the Common Driveway at 50 Atlantic Avenue. There were some minor field deficiencies that were recognized by planning staff as well as the Fire Department. The contractor for the applicant has rectified those, been confirmed by a visit by the Fire Inspector, so they're satisfied with the construction for fire access as well as the water infrastructure that was associated with this project. So at this point, they're recommending the release from the covenant of the Common Driveway Special Permit that was issued for 50 Atlantic Ave.
A discussion on release of covenant? Hearing none?
I move that we approve the release of covenant for 50 Atlantic Avenue Common Driveway.
Second.
We have a motion by Jane Ramsen, seconded by Beverly Bookin. Need a roll call vote, please.
Member Noonan?
Yes.
Member McCarroll?
Yes.
Member Bookin?
Yes.
Member Cook?
Yes.
Member Ramsen?
Yes.
Member Rosen?
Yes.
Member Henry?
Yes.
Next, we have review of minutes from May 2 of 2024. Sounds like it was just yesterday. Any corrections, additions, submissions, amplifications? Jane?
I move that we approve the minutes of May 2, 2024.
A second. So we have a motion by Jane Ramsen, seconded by Hank McCarroll. Roll call vote, please.
Member Noonan?
Yes.
Member McCarroll?
Yes.
Member Bookin?
Yes.
Member Cook?
Yes.
Member Ramsen?
Yes.
Member Rosen?
Yes.
Member Henry?
Yes.
Thank you. That gets us to our last item under other business matters not reasonably anticipated prior to the noticing of this meeting.
Anyone is still watching, I'll just plug one more time, that next Tuesday night here amongst, amongst this beautiful artwork, we will have an information session on the 48-3A MBTA Communities, question and answer. I'll begin with a presentation from Eric Halverson, who's been working with the city from RKG Associates, and then we will take questions from residents on the law and the guidelines and the procedure of how we're going to get there. Following on next month, for folks that are, that are looking to follow this, you can go to the city website, there's a webpage dedicated to it if you just search for MBTA Communities or 48-3A. Planning Board meeting on June 6 will be a joint meeting with P&amp;D members, where draft districts that may be incorporated into a final zoning scenario will be presented to the board and P&amp;D members. That will be refined based on the feedback from the members. It is not a public hearing, there's not going to be public testimony or comment on that specifically that evening. But then there will be a public forum on June 12, also held here in the auditorium at 6:00 PM, where three scenarios will be presented, and folks will have the opportunity to provide feedback on that. So that, those are the meetings that are coming up. We also have, we will be having a remote meeting on May 30 on an update on a comp plan related to the vision goals and core themes that have been developed and the response and comment to that. So that will be a remote meeting at 5:00, and we'll have that posted to the website as well. The reason for the remoteness is because it's an off-cycle meeting for the planning board, and the other venues that have hybrid options are already booked. It's a regular zoning board of appeals night, so we will go remote for that one, but it will just be a discussion with Jen Goldson and company with the planning board.
Fantastic. Beverly, you look concerned. You're good? Okay. Hank, you want to do the honors?
I move we adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion. So a motion by Hank McCarroll to adjourn, seconded by Beverly Bookin.
Because Sean is still there.
Yeah.
Member Noonan?
Yes.
Member McCarroll?
Yes.
Member Bookin?
Yes.
Member Cook?
Yes.
Member Ramsen?
Yes.
Member Rosen?
Yes.
Member Henry?
Yes.
Okay. Adjourn. Safe travels back.